Good evening, the residents. Thank you for joining the second annual town meeting informational session. I'm gonna wait a few more minutes here until six forty and then work through the PowerPoint. If anytime you have any questions, please feel free to unmute and happy to take any questions. Alright, so it's six forty, I'm gonna get, get going here. We'll just work our way through the slideshow again. If there's anyone that has any questions, please feel free to speak up. Happy to answer any questions you might have. So this Saturday, check in will start at eleven AM. Meeting starts at twelve thirty at the Nahat Town Hall. Is our annual town meeting. We have a number of different articles on the agenda or on the warrant, I should say, and we've gone through a lengthy, a lengthy process to get us ready for this meeting. We need seventy-five voters for quorum. Very important day for our town where we get all of the town's business done, especially our budget and our any type of policy issues. Hopefully, we'll see a good group of folks at the meeting. The process for preparing for annual town meeting begins back in December when we start preparing the omnibus budget. We start seeking requests from departments, from committees. In January through April, we have multiple committee meetings a week between the Board of Selectmen, the Finance Committee, the Community Preservation Committee. This year with zoning articles, the Planning Board as well. In January, citizen petitions and committee requests for warrant articles are due by the thirty-first per the town charter. The Community Preservation Committee receives reviews their applications for CPA funds. Board of Selectmen's build the draft omnibus budget, we develop the warrant for annual town meeting, we submit it to the Finance Committee. Finance Committee reviews the omnibus budget and then makes recommendations on the warrant articles. In our town, the Board of Selectmen control the town meeting warrant. Except for if citizen petitions are added. They draft the omnibus budget based on the town administrator's recommendations. And then it's the Finance Committee's omnibus budget that actually gets voted on by town meeting. And in May, the report and recommendations of the Finance Committee is delivered to the household for each registered voter prior to town meeting. That book is should be been delivered to your home already by now. If not, it's also online and we'll have copies at town meeting. This year was, this year was a pretty difficult year as far as building a balanced omnibus budget. The, the main issues is the main issue here is that our expenses are increasing at a rate faster than our revenues. So when we start, the first thing we do is we look at, we estimate what our revenues are going to be going into the upcoming fiscal year. And we divide those into two separate buckets. A general fund revenue bucket and a free cash revenue bucket. And the difference between the two is general fund revenue is really used for operating expenses. Salaries, benefits, professional services, assessments, paying down debt. It's the stuff that you know you're gonna have to pay in the upcoming year. It's generated in the same fiscal year as the expense. So what we actually do is we're estimating how much money the town's gonna bring in general fund revenue from July one of this year to June thirty of next year. And that is the money that we're spending in the general fund account. Most of it is produced by property taxes, which is capped by Proposition Two and a Half. So very much restricts our growth in revenue. And local receipts and state aid as well. On the free cash side, free cash is used for one-time expenses. A capital investment, building up a reserve like a stabilization account or OPEB account, paying down additional debt, things that help your bond rating. Your town's bond rating is similar to like a personal credit score, so the more the more you are paying down your debt timely or aggressively, the better your score is gonna be, the more you have in savings. You know, the more you have the ability to pay debt in the future. Those are the things that are gonna help your bond rating, just like your own personal credit score. And it's actually generated from a prior fiscal year actual. So free cash is the sum of under expended appropriations and over generated receipts. So when the previous fiscal year ended, June thirty of last year, we reconcile the, the budget and we look at, okay, we were approved to spend this amount, but we spent less. And we estimated to bring in this amount revenue, but we brought in more. When you have those two numbers, the difference between those, those two numbers get combined. And that's the free cash amount that you're allowed to use in the upcoming fiscal year. But because we do town meeting in May and the fiscal year ends June thirtieth and starts July first, technically, the free cash that we are voting on on Saturday is generated from the last fiscal year fiscal year twenty-four. So fiscal year twenty-four free cash is voted on in fiscal year twenty-five for fiscal year twenty-six. When you look at the, look at these two buckets, you'll see that in the general fund, we had an increase about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And in the free cash revenue stream, we, we had a decrease of about eight hundred and fifty thousand. Now, the, the increase of five fifty is, is actually the alarming number. The decrease of eight fifty isn't. We really should be around eight hundred thousand dollars, nine hundred thousand dollars for our free cash amount for the size of our budget. That's a healthy place to be. We had a significant, an abnormally large amount in that fiscal year twenty-five because it was based on fiscal year twenty-three, which still had the effects of COVID when we had other funding sources helping us pay for certain costs and a much, and a, and a significant decrease in expenses. So while it's a decrease, it's actually back to about where we should be. Now let's take a closer look at the general fund revenue. So that's sixteen point one million dollars is what we estimate for, for fiscal year twenty-six. We're not including Coast Guard housing sale revenue because it's kind of split off in a separate bucket. Has to go towards paying down debt, has to go towards capital improvement projects. So it doesn't really get included in general fund revenue. So the sixteen point one million is broken down into these three different categories. Cherry sheet and state aid is the yellow, the top. And then local revenues and then property taxes. As you can see, most of our budget, it comes in from property taxes. The cherry sheet state aid funds are really more of a pass-through. The, it isn't really money that comes into the town that we get to vote on how we wanna spend it. Most of it is a pass-through to different types of assessments that are placed on any community. So when I look at how much more money do we have flexibility with and decisions to make? I even, I don't even look at, you know, that state aid number. So when you combine the local revenues and the property taxes, truly our increase over last year is closer to four hundred and twenty thousand dollars over compared to last year. So when we're looking at developing the omnibus budget for the upcoming year, we're saying, okay, we have about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars more than what we had last year. So how do we, what's our next step? We start looking at this middle column of a, a number of different things. So we add up, what is our employee contracts, individual contracts, what are our collective bargaining contracts? Police, fire, DPW, Johnson School. How much do those add up to? We have to pay those so that those funds go into, you know, we calculate how much that's gonna be. That's gonna be pulled out of that sixteen point one. We look at school assessments. What do we have to pay Swamp Scott and Essex Tech? We look at special education, tuition and transportation. We look at insurances, health and liabilities, retirement benefits. What's our debt burden? How much do we owe in debt in the upcoming year? And we add all of that up. And then we look at department requests as well. So we will ask departments, what do you need for the upcoming fiscal year? Or what do you want for the upcoming fiscal year? Or what is in your budget this fiscal year that could maybe be adjusted? Because it was a one-time expense that doesn't need to be carried forward into next year. We do that. And if we put all of these things that we need to pay next year on the list and it exceeds sixteen point one million dollars, we have to be, we have to sharpen our pencil. So as you can see, when we did that, the column on the right, the budget needs and the request added up to seventeen point two million dollars. So we had a one point one million dollar difference. So we had to go back into this list and say, which of these really need to happen? Which of these are wants? How can we adjust some of these budgets and maybe take a little bit more of a zero-based budgeting approach to it? And which have alternative funding sources? Special education, tuition and transportation. We get, there is an alternative funding source in the form of a reimbursement. It's called circuit breaker. So we did a calculation to find out how much, how much will we be funded in the upcoming fiscal year through circuit breaker that we can reduce that amount from the schools draw off the general fund? And then we look at department requests and we look at their needs and wants and annual adjustments. You know, maybe there are things that we can't do this year. Maybe there are things we did last year we can't do again. You know, what, what's, what do you really need and what can you live without? And how are we gonna, as a group collectively, you know, sharpen our pencils for the betterment of the town? So when this is just an estimated amount and it, and it's not, there, there's more, probably more than just what's on this list. But here's a number of different things that were in the operational requests or were previously funded in previous years that we had to eliminate. Because we didn't have the funds. We had to shut, we had to, we had to shave a total of five hundred and ten thousand dollars here. But you can see there's, we had done a a compensation study with CLA in twenty twenty-four, which recommended that our salaries need to go up by a certain amount in order to maintain competitiveness with the, with the market for those positions. They're called for about twenty-one thousand dollars in additional salary that we weren't able to do. Every year, we have twenty-five thousand dollars in our operational budget for grant matching. We have twenty thousand for human resource professional services. The, we could, we had to cut those out of our budget this upcoming year. We had a request for, for a full part, for a part-time position and purchase of services in the assessor's office, the planning board requested funds for purchase of services. Police Department, Fire Department and School all greatly expressed their critical staffing needs. Unfortunately, we're, we're not able to accomplish those this year. We hope that with an override next year that they could be accomplished. And it is desperately needed to be looked at closely because their, their staffing needs are, are great. Number of other items here is you can see, you know, two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars for the school that we had to offset with circuit breaker and then one-time preschool funding. There's a, an account, preschool fee account that had generated about two hundred thousand dollars that hadn't been spent, so we had to use some of that money to offset the increase in expenses the upcoming year. On the free cash side, as I mentioned, we had about eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. What we start, what we look at with state, with free cash is we first look at, our priorities are to, to put funding aside in our stabilization account. Put funding into the OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits. Whatever our capital needs are for our departments. Look at, can we pay, do we have any leftover funds that we could put towards paying additional debt down above our minimum required amount? And then maybe there's some desires, capital, capital wants by our departments. This year, as those, you know, those, all those things added up to about one little bit over a million dollars and we only had eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So we had to make some tough decisions. We felt comfortable with not putting money into stabilization this year because it is over a million dollars. It's around the seven percent mark. DLS recommended that we have five percent of our total budget in our stabilization account. We've met that goal. Our, our next goal is to get to ten percent. But given the toughness of this year, we weren't able to contribute to it this year. Our we didn't have any additional funds to go towards debt. So we're paying our minimum amount through the operating budget, but we don't have any additional free cash to go towards additional debt. And we had to, we had to say no to a lot of wants by a lot of requests that came in from department heads. That added up to about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So as you can see here, there's some big capital requests that came in for vehicle at the Fire Department, Tudor Beach railings, gazebo repairs, electrical work at the library, security work, fire protection at the library. We're hoping to fund that with money from last year, as you'll see as we get through the articles. And, and a number of other things here. So when you look at our budget, our general fund appropriation is actually decreasing almost a million dollars compared to last year, five point one percent decrease. We we have our biggest increases are in insurance and benefits and the school. School had, had a unexpectedly higher amount of special education costs. And in insurance and benefits, it's a, it's a industry-wide issue that's happening where health insurance went up in the heart and went up about nineteen percent, which was about a hundred something thousand dollar cost to the town. Even, even with that, you know, we were basically, we were able to keep almost every department in that, you know, eighty to ninety percent range of what they requested and what we were able to provide them. And for those that were less, we're working creatively to find alternative funding sources or ways to get the things done that they requested. So now I'm gonna get through some of the articles from town meeting that I hold on a second. Hey, we're back. Sorry about that. So now looking at some of the articles, this was, we've actually talked to legal. This article is gonna be indefinitely postponed. We don't, if we, we're, we're still doing the same thing, but through another mechanism. When we get to the articles that this funding is going to be used for, we will, in the motion, we will identify the account that this money is currently sitting in for those purposes. We, in last year, Article sixteen of Town Meeting voted to appropriate three hundred and seventy thousand dollars for upgrading the town's water meter system. We've actually identified an alternative funding source, MWRA zero inches long that we can utilize for this project and it will take a, it will allow us to do the whole project quicker at no extra cost. It does, so by changing the funding source for the meter project doesn't sacrifice the meter project itself. In fact, the new funding source is gonna allow us to do it faster at no extra cost. And then we're able to use the funding source that we originally were planning to use for meters towards other things like two hundred thousand for the library capital improvement project, a hundred thousand for DPW vehicle and seventy thousand for water sewer capital in the FY twenty-six budget. Article nineteen has to do with the Coast Guard housing sales. We are, we need authorization to continue to sell the remaining lots. There's two more lots that need to be sold. As of today, actually, all the ten of the eleven lots that we put up for sale have been sold. And there's only one that didn't sell and then we have one more lot that we're working through a process to have it vacated and cleared and prepared for sale like the other eleven. But we need approval by town meeting to to do additional offerings. The, the motion from twenty twenty-one limited the town to two offerings over two-year period. We've already completed two of the offerings, so we need the authority to do additional offerings. That's what this article does. Article twenty is important. This is our, the town's match for the climate change preparedness grant that we received through FEMA's Hazard Mitigation Program. This is, this article will, will fund the town's match with the state, with the grant from the feds. It adds up to about four point eight million dollars. And that money will be used to rebuild the dune at Short Beach to help prevent flooding in the future. We have two articles related to disabled veterans. Both of them were made eligible by the Hero Act. From, through the legislature last year, these will increase the amount of exemptions, real estate exemptions that disabled veterans are allowed to use. The Community Preservation Committee has a number of articles, a lot of great projects here. As you can see, twenty-three A has to do with the roof replacement for the life-saving station. Twenty-three B is roof replacement for the Housing Authority prop, for some of the Housing Authority properties. C is to continue the project, the ecological restoration work that's been going on at Bailey's Hill. D is Pleasant Street Playground improvements. E is library capital improvements. This is a mix between borrowing and the use of free cash. This is for very important, much-needed capital improvements. At the library, the library is dealt with water damage that desperately needs to be fixed and repaired. It's an old building. It's, needs, you know, some repointing and some grout work and repairs as well as improvements to their electrical system. as well as improvements to their electrical system and fire alarm system. The rest here are pretty standard articles, but I think it's important to mention twenty-three H, which would, which is going that payment is gonna retirement, retire the bond completely from twenty nineteen. Twenty-four is our ADU article. This will, if passed, will put Nahat in compliance. We'll be complying with the Affordable Homes Act of twenty twenty-four. This, the town Planning Board took advantage of many of the restrictions that the state law allowed municipalities to take advantage of. For instance, passing this article will only allow one ADU per parcel. The ADU nor the principal dwelling will be allowed to be rented on a short-term basis. The height is restricted to the same height that's permitted in that zoning district for a single-family dwelling as well as setbacks. There's additional off-street, one additional off-street parking space will be required. And there's a number of other things that are important here that the town Planning Board did a really good job of making sure they listened to the community and understood what their concerns were and incorporated those protections into the bylaw. Regardless if this article passes or not. Protected ADUs are allowed by right in the town of Nahat based on legislative action at the state. The state have now legalized that. When the state did that, it also gave municipals the opportunity to regulate them. So if you are concerned about overdevelopment, concerned about the action that the state made, you should be supportive of this article because it does, it actually helps protect the town more so than if we don't pass something, they'll just be allowed with no restrictions whatsoever. Thank you for being, thank you for tuning in. I have a open office hours this Friday. Welcome to stop by the town hall at any time and happy to talk through the articles and look forward to seeing everyone on Saturday at twelve thirty.